How are you doing for us? Good to see you, man.
You have fun with the toys?
I was taking pictures.
You have fun with the toys?
Oh, yeah.
On Christmas morning?
Oh, yeah.
Did she have to say Daddy leave my toys alone?
No.
Um, no.
Yeah.
Because you're a kid at heart. Okay, oh, we're ready.
Okay. This meeting of the Shelton Metropolitan Park District is now called to order. We have an opportunity for public comment if anyone has signed up for public comment.
No one has signed up.
Okay, so we will move ahead with the consent agenda. Have you had an opportunity to?
So I make them?
Oh, no.
Is that a motion?
We're going to have this, have it read.
Oh, okay.
Consent agenda read and then I would appreciate a motion.
I guess, sorry.
Consent agenda, agenda, the approval of the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District minutes from July 25, 2016.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Currys? We have no old business under new business. We have resolution number SMPD 20-1216, a resolution of the City of Shelton, 2017, final budget, and we will have our Director of Financial Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The Shelton Metropolitan Park District held the hearing associated with the final budget process on December 5th, and the proposed 2017 budget resolution 20-1216 is attached. The final budget is ready to go, and I just gave you the latest version of that, and this resolution is ready for adoption.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the resolution? Seeing none. Do you, my fellow board members, have any comments or questions?
No, it looks good to me.
Okay, I am ready for a motion to pass this resolution.
Aye.
Reading of the resolution?
Reading.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah.
Resolution number SMPD 20-1216, a resolution of the Shelton Metropolitan Parks, Park District, adopting the budget for the year ending December 31, 2017.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
I will make that motion. I move that the resolution number, the resolution number 20-1216 for the Shelton Metropolitan Park District, a resolution of the Park District adopting the budget for the year ending December 31, 2017.
And I, December through, yeah, that's right, and I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, do we have an administration report?
None at this time.
Our next regular Shelton Metropolitan Parks District meeting will be January 30, 2017. This meeting is adjourned.
And now we will call to order our regular City of Shelton Commission study session, and first item of business is for us to let the public know what our weekly agenda is. And so Commissioner Moore, do you have some activities?
Just my regular ones other than Wednesday evening. I will be attending swearing-in reception for our new County Commissioner, Kevin Shuddy. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner McDowell?
My week is very quiet. I will also be there Wednesday night at Kevin's swearing-in ceremony at 6:30 at the Colonial House. He's our new, going to be our new County Commissioner.
County Commissioner. All right, and I will also be attending that event, hopefully, and then again on, that will be Wednesday, on Thursday I'll be attending a Economic Development Council meeting also. And that completes our weekly commission reports. Next is the general public comment period. If anybody would like to speak about anything, this is the opportunity. Do we have anybody signed in?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. Next is a consent agenda. Could we please have a reading? Are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Can we please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Bachelor's number 13310 through 13317 in the amount of $234,675.46.
Is there a motion to approve that consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read. I second that.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. No action agenda this week, but we have some items under old business, and the first item will be concerning our budget ordinance, and I'll be turning the meeting over to our city manager, Ryan Wheaton, and our financial service director, services director, Nola.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have the 2017 final budget before you. That does include an adjustment of the increases in water and sewer rates down to zero. So that is ready for approval. Ordinance number 1891-1216, requesting adoption of that ordinance and adopting the budget for 2017.
All right, is there, let's see, at this time, because it is an action item, I believe we want to see if there's anyone signed up for public comment concerning this budget.
No one signed up at this point.
Okay. All right, so, at this, at this point, then I guess I would ask my fellow Commissioners if we would like to have a motion to adopt this.
Um.
Isn't that?
And then discussion.
Yeah, motion, discussion.
Motion, then discussion. Okay. Are we doing both at the same time?
It looks like to me it's just 1891-1216.
Oh, okay.
There's another one next.
The ordinance adopts the budget.
Okay, so we do the first one first. Okay. Okay. I do have comment afterwards, but I will move that we approve ordinance number 1891-1216, first and final reading, and ordinance of the City of Shelton adopting the budget for the year ending December 31, 2017.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion at this time?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that ordinance passes.
Okay, I would also move that we approve. What am I going to do?
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
We're going to do the second one, okay.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, at this time, we have another ordinance that looks like the same thing we just did, but it's a little different.
Okay.
At this time, we're going to have our Public Works Director. Craig Gregory.
Surprise!
Now, 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 just a second. This is, this is all my little notes, and I looked at it, and we got the Gregory part, but what I wanted to make sure is I got the Craig part. I like to call people by their first names when I can, and so Craig Gregory, I just wanted to make sure because it wasn't written right there, and I know him, so. Would you like to talk to us?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. After a vote last week, at last week's commission meeting, we are bringing forward ordinance number 1893-1216, amending ordinance 1852-0614, and also 1838-1113, amending the sewer rates for 2017 to zero, both for sewer and water, and those are in the Shelton Municipal Code Chapter 12.28, setting sewer rates, and 15.28, setting water rates.
Now, for the public's consumption, maybe you could just kind of explain why we are doing that, because we had a final budget and we were ready to pass it, but we were concerned about this issue, and so isn't that why we have to kind of do these ordinances? Because something had been set before.
That is correct.
We had rates set before with an increase, I believe, of 5% on sewer, 3% on water.
Under section 14.28.020 through 14.28.060, and also 15.28.02, or 020 through 15.28.085 of the Shelton Municipal Code, are automatic rate increases set forth on a vote previous, in previous years.
So we had to vote again to change that because we felt conditions had warranted that.
That is correct.
Okay, just so everybody kind of understands why we're doing the double, sometimes you got to take something back and put something back in place, so. All right, well, at this point, are there any questions or comments from, wait, sorry, one more thing. I think we need public, we do the public first. Anyone from the public want to weigh in on this? This is the opportunity. Anybody signed in? Viquila?
No, there is no one signed up.
All right, now, is there any comments from my fellow Commissioners about this?
Yeah, I had, actually, I had questions for Craig.
Come back up, young man.
Gregory, Craig Gregory.
Craig Gregory.
That's what you get for having two first names. I just had, after studying this again, I think I understand that we're okay for a year, and we can push the rate increases out for a year, depending on what we find as we look closer at the numbers that we based our rate schedule on. So we're not going to be faced next year with 6% water increase and an 8% sewer increase to catch up.
The rates would move forward with what was already passed in the future years.
So it would.
It would not be taxed on to, you would not tax 17 on to 18.
So it would just move it out to 2021 or whatever if we followed with, if the numbers are all correct and we need to do these increases, then it would just extend, extend the pay?
I don't believe it would extend it. The rates are set through 2020, and then we would need to adopt new rates at the end of that.
Okay, but the reason we were set for 2020, that was to take care of loans and payments that we had to make?
I think a point of clarification here is that we were asked to keep the rates for 2017 at the 2016 level. What that means is the ordinance that you're adopting or considering today to do the rate flat for 2017 is not a codified ordinance. It won't change the Shelton Municipal Code. And what we had, you had requested staff earlier is for a clarification on what we need to do for the rates going forward, 2018, 19, and 20. And that was going to be brought back and discussed as soon as they could kind of look at those rates, say what they were embedded in the, in the rate code for, what reasons they were there, and give you a.
Okay.
More of an explanation on that going forward, and at that time, we're going to have to adopt an ordinance that will be codified in the Shelton Municipal Code, resetting the 2017 rates to zero, and then setting the 2018, 19, and 20 based on the information that you get from the report.
Rate increases, not rates.
So we will have to have another ordinance that is codified into the code, setting the rates for the 18, 19, and 20.
Okay.
Because we've repealed the 2017 rates.
Okay, and so hopefully by the time that we do that, we will have the, the numbers will be looked at again as far as what we based our rate increases on, to make sure those are correct and still necessary?
From our attorney as well, that we will have to have a codified ordinance setting the rates going forward.
Okay, I feel more comfortable with that. And then, so my, oh, my other question about this is, so, we, so we will have to look at all of this again and then discuss it for next year as well as far as what we're going to do, but hopefully at that time, we can adopt rate increases that will be put out for a couple of years, so.
Right.
Okay, okay, yeah, I feel okay with that.
What I'd like to do is just stay there for just a second, is to kind of also tag on to what Commissioner Moore just said, that basically, these locked-in sewer rates for this amount of time that we had agreed to do, they were all based upon our projections on where would we be, what do we need to do, how are things go? Every year, we can come back and reassess these things. We're projecting two or three or four years out in the line, and that, you know, it's our job to, every year, and sometimes you leave them in place. I'm 100% behind small incremental rate increases because of, you know, horror stories going back 40, 50, 60 years where they don't do one for 20 years, and then, oh gee, we're raising your rate 67% in a short amount of time or something. So I am really for having, but because of such a staff change we've had in the city government here, that it is my opinion, we really need to let this new family kind of settle in and let us all kind of start figuring out exactly how, where we're really going, where we're really going to project, what our priorities are, and then get into setting rates based upon where we are today, not where we were one or two years ago. So I think this is the right step in, in that, and, and there's nothing wrong with relooking at these things. These are not set in concrete because things change in life, and so that's kind of how I feel about this one. But if we come back next year and we get into an incremental small rate increase based upon the where the city is and what we were doing at that time, it is much better than waiting 10 years and hitting someone with a 38% rate increase. So that's where I feel I kind of am on this.
Yeah. I, I like to, I would like to each year come back and see if we, how much we need to raise the rates, and if it's just the incremental small ones, so be it, but take a look at them every year, see how we're doing.
I think the intent would be that we look at them earlier in the year so that we're not scrambling like we are.
Pressure.
Of course, halfway through.
Right now. No pressure, that's what I meant to.
This is just kind of a interim.
So maybe June or July, we look at them again, see what's going on.
I have, um, I have another question, so, um, one thing that we neglected to verify at the last meeting too is what the actual, um, average amount that these rate increases would have been, so that we can, um, give this, give this to the community as far as this is what they will be saving per month, or this is what they would have been. And I know that there was, uh, there was a number.
Six dollars and thirty-seven cents a month is what I was told, I think, or I saw that someplace. Thirty, is that?
I think I'll defer that question to Ryan.
We have it, I'll find, we got it last week, so I can get it.
Okay, and I do remember seeing it, but I just thought it was a valuable thing for
Sure.
our audience to know. And, um, you know, it's not a huge amount. Hopefully it will make a difference. Hopefully, it will, um, show good faith on the part of the commission to help with, in, in this small way, it is a small way. But, um, you know, everybody buy a coffee a month, I don't know.
About six dollars and thirteen cents a month.
Okay, six dollars a month. So it's, it's not a big, big amount, but, um, you know, it is what it is, so.
I think it just, um, it's almost like, I don't want to say a psychological thought, but it kind of just, okay, our city is doing something for the citizens now, helping in a small, small way.
I think so. So, anyway, it is where we are. Is there any more questions for, uh, on this issue?
Oh, I wanted to ver- to, um, make one more comment, as far as we, um, continually, and I have done this, and I did this at our last meeting, have said, you know, we don't want to make the same, create the same condition that we've dealt with in the last ten or twelve years, as far as these rate increases. And so when I say that it's, um, mistakes of prior commissions, I'm not talking ten or even twenty years ago. I'm talking about for decades before that, that created a situation where we've needed to invest this money in our, in our, um, uh, infrastructure. And so I know that it's been a long process and we're still moving forward, so, yeah, that's it, I'm finished.
Okay, absolutely. So at this time, we ask for any public comment. I don't see anybody at this time. You have to sign in and come on up, three minutes.
Thank you.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Randy Lewis, uh, proud resident of the Mason County Urban Growth Area, which means I'm subject to Shelton City rules, but I don't have a vote on any of that. I do have a question, I don't know if anyone's allowed to ask it or not, but, um, when I'm looking at the sewer rates, and we know, we know the percentages, but the sewer rates themselves in different categories are expressed as a dollar amount, and you can back into the percentage increases from that. So, is what happened today, we're changing the twenty seventeen dollar amounts so that they're equal to the twenty sixteen dollar amounts, right? So suppose the commission does nothing next year, does that mean that, are the twenty eighteen, nineteen, are the eighteen, nineteen, and twenty rates that are there now, are they still there now, or have those gone away as, as a result of what you've done today?
They're still there. But we can choose to change.
Yeah, and you should. I, I never could figure out why they put in multi-year baked-in rates. You should look at it every year like you're saying. But I think if you do, say you do nothing, which you're not going to do, you still have the same dollar amount. So if you have a five percent increase on that schedule for twenty seventeen, well then you have another five percent rate increase in twenty eighteen, based on the twenty seventeen rate. But it's not a percentage, it's a dollar amount. So if you do nothing, your rate in twenty eighteen is going to be a little more than ten percent of what your rate was in twenty sixteen, if you do nothing.
If you do nothing, and, and everything is.
Yeah, and also, one more comment that, when you look at it year by year, you don't just look at what's going to happen next year. Uh, in the projection, there is provision for capital expenses down the road. I personally thought it was a flawed projection, but that's what we look at too, and it'll be helpful for the public to say, these are the, these are the rates for next year, we need part of it for ongoing maintenance, but we also need to plan and reserve for what we think the, I think the future capital expenses are going to be, so I, and also the sources of income, that sort of thing, which I personally think should be, uh, done in general for all departments. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, at this time, I guess I would like to ask if we have a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I will move that we adopt ordinance number eighteen ninety-three dash twelve sixteen, amending ordinance number eighteen fifty-two zero six one four and eighteen thirty-eight eleven thirteen, water and sewer rates for the upcoming year two thousand seventeen.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, next, we would like to invite our wonderful staff member Craig Gregory back to the podium to talk to us about well number one.
Mayor Commissioners, I know we've had this discussion many of times, but after reviewing the well one options that were presented to you, we feel that the information may have been flawed somewhat, uh, and we would like some direction from the commission to whether you would like to move forward with the actual well one rehab, using loan funds that we have now that we will have to pay back in the future, or if you would like staff to relook at that entire project and potentially look at a different funding source for that project.
Questions or comments?
I, um, I actually would, I believe, be in favor of looking at the entire project, and I'm so, um, all of the information that we were given for a period of time there was very suspect at this point, after we've gone back and reexamined it, so. Um, I guess my question is if we looked at it again, made sure the project was, um, necessary, and make sure that the options that were given will more than likely work, and the costs, kind of like to relook at the whole thing. I, I would have two questions. Number one is if we do not use the loan money because we still could use the one percent loan money, right?
That's correct.
How long do we have to make that decision?
June of tw- well, you would have to be finished with the funding June of twenty eighteen.
Okay.
That project would have to be complete.
Okay, and do we know if we were to choose not to take a one percent loan, which, uh, what other funding sources would we be looking at?
There are a number of grant opportunities out there for wells and water projects that we would like to explore.
Those, do those all require matching funds?
I, I would say most of them do. I, I guess I can't say that all of them do.
Okay. Um, so I guess I would just like for everyone to reexamine the project and verify the numbers, and then at that time, uh, I guess do a comparison as to estimated costs, if, um, we went for a loan, if the matching funds would equal the one percent loan, and do whichever one is the most economical.
Okay.
Well, uh, on this subject, because we've gone from having to have a brand-new well drilled at one point three million to the revelation that we could really repair the existing well at two hundred thousand rather than one point three, the progression is going to, well, what happens if you pull the well off of line and you don't use the well at all? Uh, finding out that last summer, during the month of August, we, the well was not even hooked up. We didn't use it, and we faced no water shortage. You know, we didn't have a water problem this last summer because that well was offline. Is that true?
That is true.
That is true. So I'm just kind of going, okay, we have a little time, we also have time with this loan to make this because you're going to make this decision. So I think it would be prudent at this time to, yeah, I wouldn't jump in repairing that well right now, just because every day there seems to be a new bombshell that drops in our laps and explodes and says we demand money, you know, and so I think we can kind of put this one off a little bit. It doesn't appear that we needed that water last year. It doesn't appear that we're running out of water. So until we have all of the staff and recommendations and grant money, even if you got a fifty percent matching grant, one hundred thousand dollar loan's better than a two hundred thousand dollar loan. Doesn't appear to be a big rush in my world, so I think this falls in line with look and see. So I would recommend not borrowing the money today, and continue to keep us in line if there is a grant money available, so.
You guys said it all?
I guess, I don't know.
Um, Crin, I, I like it to, to compare the numbers. What would the, you know, the loan versus other funding be? And if we can just save a few dollars with other funding, even if we have to match it, so be it, that's, that's great.
Um, I, I think we need like maybe a big briefing on, on this particular subject because definitely we don't want the, you know, the scenario that we were looking at, um, last year. Does, if we don't do the well in the near future, it, does it impact our, um, capacity for growth? Like, I know that, um, there are people looking at possibly doing some, um, multifamily, building, some apartment buildings. Is there a question as far as the capacity with, given our existing water system, if we do not do the well in the near future?
We will know more, uh, most likely by the end of twenty seventeen. We are going through a water comp plan um, at this point. But it will most likely not be done until the end of twenty seventeen. We'll be able to more accurately answer those questions. And this is not a project, if we put it off now, it's not something that is going to be done in twenty seventeen. It would be a project that would we, we would look at in twenty eighteen.
Okay, so what we need to do though is get some kind of, um, comparison on available grants and, uh, grant matches, if we are going to take advantage of the one percent loan. If we were to, we'd need to make that decision prior to the comp plan being completed, or the water analysis being.
We should be able to answer most of the questions by the summer of twenty seventeen.
Okay, which would still hopefully give us.
Which would give us enough time to, to get through that. I guess the biggest point here that we're asking is that the commission understands that we are going to have to get through another summer, um, running only wells three and four. We have met with water staff. They feel very confident that we can certainly get through next summer, um, with the two wells that we have up and running. We can utilize the Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone and the tank, um, to flow water back in if we do have an issue.
Okay.
So we do have some extra capacity. But there is a slight possibility that if the perfect storm came and one of the wells went down and we had a major drought, that we could have some issues. The likelihood of that happening and all coming together at the same time is not great. But we have to understand that if we put this off, there is a very small chance that we could have some water issues.
Okay.
Very small.
But you're talking about the water issues would probably be water rationing or?
That's correct.
Okay, so if someone came in and they wanted to build a hundred apartments, would they be allowed to do that, given our current water situation?
I will have to get back to you on that answer.
Okay, 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 great.
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you're going to get back to us on that issue, then we probably ought to withhold this, our recommendation, until we get that information. So why don't we place this under old business for next week? Is that okay?
That would be fine.
We've done that before.
It sounds like everybody's pretty much in agreement. I just.
I think it's okay. It's good to, see, you know, uh, again, I, I think we need to get better information and more, you know, I mean, if it's a one percent chance, and we are trying to get this fiscal house in order and stuff, and put priorities on where we're borrowing money, where a potential grant might come in, I think that I would lean in favor of postponing this till the, the two thousand eighteen time period, but this information is good. If you say, it looks like, if, if last summer was just like this summer, we could add five hundred units on and it not affect us, that would make our decision probably a little bit better. So can you find that for us?
We can certainly do that, and I think to just answer Tracy's question a little better also, we do, as, at the staff level, would like to look at this entire project once again to see what the needs are. Is rehabbing well one the best option? Or do we need to look at other options? Um, and just to have some time to do that at this point, um, is much needed.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to table this one until, bring in our old business for next week. Thank you very much, sir. And now I'd like to turn this over to Craig Gregory.
And I'm actually going to start by turning it over to Nola to answer a question that you had, uh, at the last commission meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, you had asked about the, um, cost of processing biosolids. And I did spend some time reviewing the, the calculations that went into determining what our rate would be for that. And I saw five major components in that calculation process. I saw, uh, review of power utilization, both, uh, comparing weekdays and weekends, which is relevant for this because the biosolids are normally processed on weekdays. I also saw equipment depreciation factored in. I also saw space utilization factored into the cost. I also saw, uh, fully loaded personnel costs for wages and benefits, as well as all of the supplies needed for, uh, processing the biosolids. And from what I reviewed, uh, those calculations did appear to be quite comprehensive, and they did appear to be accurate.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Nola on that? No, thank you. That was things that I was thinking about. A lot of those little hidden costs, you know, to make sure we don't get stuck with something, okay.
So I do have a question. So do you have any numbers that, you gave numbers last week about a hundred and seventy thousand revenue to the city. Do you have that number minus these comprehensive costs, what it's going to cost to run it? First, and then how, how much we are actually going to make as a city?
Would you like to weigh in on this?
Make is a relative term, so the money that we get is going to stay in sewer.
Right.
You want, you want a net cost?
I want, what, instead of you saying, uh, we'll be, so a hundred and seventy thousand will be coming into this, but then we have this comprehensive cost under it, what would the cost actually be that we would?
The majority of this cost that is figured into this is the depreciation of equipment. That eventually we will have to replace the equipment anyway. So by not moving forward with these outside organizations bringing us their biosolids, we are going to have to foot the bill for the entire replacement of the dryer that ran us a little over three million dollars to install.
Okay.
Plus the building. This does give us the opportunity to supplement some of that, depending on how the commission wants to move forward with what those, what the. wants to move forward with what those, what the revenue will be used for. I don't believe the expenses, you will see much of an increase and the sewer department will be able to absorb any of those with the existing budget that they have.
So, are you saying that the revenue, I won't use the word make, the revenue from this project after everything is taken from it, to depreciation, all the, the work, all that it costs to work this project, are you still looking at about 170,000 or are we looking at 150,000, are we looking at 140,000? What are we looking at?
The expenses will go up by small increments.
Okay.
So, it could be up to the commission to use those funds however they feel they are needed, because the sewer budget at this point can absorb any of the additional costs with the existing budget that they have. It will not take any additional manpower to run the estimated amount that we are getting, not only from Mason County, but these other agencies. Testing, we already have to do for the existing material that we run, so there should not be any additional cost. It would just be looking at that through the same test.
You have just one man that runs that, that facility right now?
The dryer itself, yes, is a single individual.
Okay, you won't be hiring anybody else on for that?
We will not be hiring any additional staff.
Okay.
Any more questions for Craig Gregory?
I have, um, this just occurred to me and I apologize because I don't know if you would've even, you'd even to make a guess about this. The percentage of the, um, sludge that we're looking at taking in from other entities compared to the amount that we currently do, what is the percentage of increase?
It's about a quarter.
Okay.
From what we produce at the main plant and the satellite plant, which we haul our solids from the satellite plant to the main plant to run through the dryer, it's about a quarter more than what we are producing right now.
Okay, great, you knew that answer, I'm so glad. Thank you.
Oh, right, so you're looking for us, it looks like you have a document to sign and, um, we don't need any public comment or motion on this, do we?
I believe you do, and just to clarify, the city attorney has modified the original ILA with Mason County to a private contract with AAA Septic to do the hauling and disposal of the Alderbrook Treatment Plant, the Skokomish and Squawson Tribes, uh, also.
So, we're looking for a motion?
I believe what they were asking you to do is put this under the action agenda for next week.
Correct.
Okay, so we can take public comment.
All right, so I think we concur to do that. Let's put it on the action agenda, uh, for next week. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Next is administration reports, I will turn this over to, um, well, I guess I can just call all these people out, let's just go for Mr. Mark Ziegler first, Community Development Director, Mark.
Thank you, Your Honor Commissioners, um, today providing you some department updates. We'll start off with code enforcement, uh, following up there the end of the year and the end of the month of December. Uh, code enforcement has taken care of, removed nine derelict vehicles throughout the city. Uh, five travel trailers are slated for removal by the end of this month, by the end of this week as well, so a number of travel trailers that have been derelict and abandoned are, um, otherwise not operable. Uh, we've managed 10 nuisance complaints, primarily trash and garbage in yards and things like that. Uh, five of those are resolved and four of those are going through the abatement process now, so working with those, uh, property owners or, um, or tenants of those properties to, uh, clean up their, uh, their trash or, uh, or other, um, other things in their yard. Uh, we had one garage demolition that was, uh, that was tagged unsafe, and so that came down in December as well and removed that here just across the street with a, um, with a building permit attached to it for a renovation of a, of a house over here. Uh, within the planning department, uh, staff presented, uh, draft comp plan, uh, to the Mason County Planning Advisory Commission on 12/19, so there were some, a few comments derived from that, uh, presentation. Uh, we're looking at the environmental impact statement for the comp plan to be, um, presented to the commission sometime in the month of January. That process will have a 60, 60-day review and a public comment period, uh, followed by a public hearing for adoption of that later on this year, so you'll be seeing that next month for, uh, for your perusal. Um, one other thing that we haven't briefed the commission on are the variable message boards that went up on, uh, each side of town, the north side and the south side. Uh, we processed 47 applications this year, uh, starting February 18th, um, and through, through last week, so 47 different, uh, messages have gone up on those message boards and we've provided that service to the community, uh, in lieu of the, uh, the vinyl banners that went up over, uh, Mills, over Mill Street and Railroad and Olympic Highway North. Uh, let's see, the SPAC committee, uh, SPAC committee's been, uh, meeting recently, um, and we're looking forward to them kind of redirecting some of their efforts and looking at, uh, looking at that task force, uh, recommendation, the poverty task force recommendation that came down a couple of years ago, and really looking at the recommendations from those, uh, to, uh, see how they can best meet the goals that came out of that, uh, that document and move forward there. So, you'll be seeing some more, uh, some more updates from, from that committee and specifically from some of the, uh, recommendations that that, uh, that planning document provided you a couple of years ago. Uh, building department, uh, in 2016, these are kinda year-end numbers, 2016, we had 11, uh, new single-family residence building permits submitted, that's up nine over 2015, so we had two in 2015. Uh, new commercial building permits, we had eight in 2016, up from two in 2015, uh, that's primarily all down at SPI, down at Sierra Pacific Industries for the mill. Uh, total number of permits, this is roofing, windows, whatever alterations and things like that, at 339 permits in 2016.
And how many were in 2015? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't have it on my notes.
Never mind.
I'm sorry, I didn't have 2015 totals, I just had the single-family residents. I'll provide those to you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, in the facilities department, we've been working a lot with some of the situations around the library and working with Timberland Regional Library to help, um, kinda rectify some of those issues, especially outside of the building. Uh, we're working with Timberland to, um, install some cameras outside for surveillance, uh, safety, improve safety out there. Uh, we've worked with the police department, uh, Officer Campbell, uh, went by one night and did a, um, environmental assessment of the, of the surroundings of the building, looking for, um, safety issues that might be, might be, um, might have arose, risen through, you know, the landscaping that has grown up or lack of lighting and things like that, really, really helped out in identifying a number of areas that we not only knew about before, but maybe some of the other areas around the building that, um, we didn't, that haven't been addressed in the past. So, uh, what we're gonna do is work with Timberland, uh, some more. Uh, city staff are gonna start removing some of the landscaping around there, especially some of the landscaping that is blocking light from the streetlights or, or some of the parking lot lights and things like that on the building. Uh, some places, some places that are really, um, avenues for people to maybe hide out or bed down or just do things that, that they feel like they're safe being out of sight from the general public, but also maybe open up the building a little more to the street and to the general public coming by. We've got those junipers, those vertical junipers right through the middle of that landscaping out on Alder Street, um, that have really, I think, grown past their, uh, past, past their intended use, so we're looking at some of those, uh, some of the, some of the trees being limbed up, open up some of those light and some of those corridors to, uh, help, uh, provide some safety for everybody involved and provide some sightlines for the general public as well as the police department when they're, when they're driving by or coming through the parking lot as well, so we can, uh, make sure and, uh, and keep everybody, uh, feeling safe and secure when they're using our public library. That's my report today, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them.
Questions or comments? I had, I'll pretend like I'm just a citizen out here and I've been watching those new electronic billboard things, you know, and I love them, but what I would do, what I would like to see done, or possibly, is if you could do it in the letters, just a little bigger, and if you could just possibly just kind of say, "This Saturday at da-da-da", click, and then "This Saturday" or, or "Nine to da-da-da", click, and just somehow, because when I'm watching it and I'm kinda scrolling it, you know, I don't know, you're driving down the hill and up there, I practiced trying to do this, I practiced, can I get the message? And I'm having a hard time doing it, so I don't know who programs it, do you personally program those things?
I don't, no.
You know what I'm saying, there might be a different way to do that so that the people are getting bigger and begging for their buck, people are finding out information a little bit clearer and better, but it just seems like you're getting a lot of information there and it, you just can't get it in. You're not gonna get all, you're not, you'd have to park to see the whole thing, but even to get, if you're trying to get one event before you get past it, if there was a better way to program it, less words, bigger words, possibly click this and then click the next one so you're getting the, the little reading thing, just something I thought about, a couple of people talked to me about it too, they can't quite get it, and so anyway, just thought that I'd just bring that up, you asked for comments, so.
We'll certainly look at different options to help provide the information to the community that, uh, that, uh, some of the nonprofits and other events are, uh, are seeking us to help them out with.
Thank you very much, is that okay?
My pleasure.
All right. Next, we have a fire marshal in the house, would talk to us about a fire department update, Mike Patty and I, gone back many years on this subject.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Commissioners, Mike Patty, Central Mason Fire. I believe you have in front of you Chief McKernan's report, uh, shows statistics from both the city and the district perspective. Uh, our biggest, uh, run impact still continues to be EMS and rescue responses with about 90% of our response ratio. Uh, this afternoon, we ran on response number 5100 even, uh, so far for the year, so we'll be just about, just a little over 5100 calls for the year, and Chief McKernan will give you those, uh, exact year-end responses at his report, uh, next time. I do believe you have a, uh, a little blurb from the National Fire Protection Association that says get ahold of winter freeze.
Yeah.
Um, uh, some tips on keeping yourself, uh, clear and, uh, safe during the winter months. We haven't had any, uh, real big events yet, we, we're real lucky this year during, uh, Christmas, we didn't have any Christmas tree fires or holiday, uh, electrical, you know, from lights, uh, those types of fires were incidents yet, so we've been real lucky, and we'd just like to ask the citizens to, uh, stay vigilant this year. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much for the great job you guys are doing, you know, I'm glad the Christmas season, we didn't have, uh, you know, a lot of emergencies and stuff and so, and education is a lot of, this is really, I've cut this out, I'm gonna take that home because, just let you know the little things you can do with extension cords and heaters and all that stuff to kinda help you so you're not one of those statistics, so.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next is a police chief, I believe, Darren Moody is gonna come and talk to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, since this is the last time we'll address you for the year, I'm gonna kinda give you a quick snapshot of what we saw in 2016 at the police department. Excuse me, we're on target right now to just about reach 11,000 calls for service in 2016. And officers started carrying Narcan this year, and within the first few months, we had three saves of that. Our staff participated in six, almost 700 hours of training last year, which is unprecedented at the police department, it recertified us in a lot of different things. We don't anticipate that being an every-year thing, but that got us up to date with our training, so that gives you an idea of the level of training that they're seeing at the staff level. 2016 was also the first year we had a full staff of detectives and they were able to clear out most of the backlog cases that came through. We continued to see a drop in thefts and burglaries in 16, just as we did in 15. In 16, so far, there's over 25 less burglary victims and over 100 less thefts than there were in 15, 17 less assault victims, and the only crimes we saw a significant increase in were auto theft and weapons violations. In 2016, and the end of 2015 through 2016, we've had four employees resign or retire from the police department, three police officers and an office staff. Um, just so you know how the hiring process goes for police officers, our reserve academy that we put on over a year ago was one of the best things we could've done, because we've, we can hire an officer as a provisional police officer with some training, but within six months, they have to attend a full-time academy, which was what Hector Diaz just graduated from, so we can keep them on the street for a period of up to six months, but then after that, they've gotta get to that academy. The good thing we did is we will hire four police officers within a six-month period, somewhere in that neighborhood. Out of those four, three of them came out of our reserve academy. The fourth one actually came out of our reserve academy for another agency, but decided to come to Shelton. So, we got a big bang for our buck with that, 'cause we were able to see the employees, have them work with us as reserves, put them on the street and use them as provisional officers until we could get them to the academy in the next year. Um, we also anticipate two more retirements in 2017, um, and one of those will be office staff and probably a police officer. We currently have 17 police officers, which is one less than we had in 2014. We have 2.75 full-time employees for office staff, that's one less than in 14, and, uh, I answer any questions you have right now on any of that, that's where we stand at the end of 2016.
Questions or comments for our police chief?
No. No, I would just say congratulations, I hear nothing but good about our police department.
We're, uh, we're enjoying a lot of community support right now.
Yeah, it's great.
Due to the fact that the folks on the street are making a lot of contacts on good notes, not just typical police notes.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you very much, Chief Moody, appreciate the report. All right, next is any, uh, administration final touches?
Community service update.
I don't know if I was getting tired or what, I'm sorry. Come on up, we're gonna have Jerry, uh, talk to us about, uh, the, uh, community outreach there. Or Shelby's, well Shelby's gonna talk first, but I think Jerry's gonna talk too.
I'm just gonna give a, a brief history, if I can, if it's turned on here.
Oh, we got a little one on.
There we go.
Isn't that nice?
So, I'm just gonna give a, a brief history of our community service program, and then, uh, we're gonna have this slideshow and Jerry's gonna, uh, talk to you about that. Um, our community service program began in May of 1991 as a full-time program with a supervisor. At that time, the supervisor also provided some bailiff and transport, um, duties for the court and also later expanded into electronic, electronic home monitoring. With the economic slowdown, the position was reduced to a .5 FTE, so electronic home monitoring was then performed by the local, uh, WASPIC office, who was providing, um, electronic home monitoring, uh, throughout the area, um, for, uh, the other courts as well. Um, uh, bailiff transport services were then provided by the sheriff's office for a short period of time and then, uh, the following year moved to the police department, and, um, the police department were doing the transport services until, uh, we instituted the video hearings. Jerry Tid has been our community service supervisor, um, since 2014, and the program has really flourished under her supervision. Uh, currently, her position is 25 hours per week, but is expanding to full-time in January 2017. In addition to the community service program, she also supervises now a limited number of individuals on electronic home monitoring and assists the police with court security and also reviews inmates with medical costs or eligibility for Apple Care. We'll be running a PowerPoint slideshow and Jerry will talk to you about, uh, projects that she's involved with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, first time at doing this, so... We have the slides up, for me, I'm more of a visual person to see what I actually do out in the field, it's easy to say you just supervise people, but I think we make a big difference in the community. Um, I don't know if you're all familiar with community service, but they go through the legal system and they're deemed appropriate for community service instead of spending time in jail, um, so they come out and work with me, and I've been doing that two days a week. And some of the projects that we've been doing, we work on sidewalks throughout town, um, if you take a look at the before picture, things get overgrown, and there, there's a lot of sidewalks in this town, so it's nice to have a, a group of people that can go out and just kinda keep up with some of the things. The park... The parks department occasionally asks us to come in and help, especially like before the big pancake breakfast, things like that, so we can go in and we can do some of the pruning and things like that, just spruce it up a little bit before events. My favorite project every year is the creek. We pull out all the water cress, I believe it's called, and as you can see in the before picture, it gets very overgrown, citizens do complain about it. Another one is cleaning out used, trails that are used a lot that people go through, but there's massive partying in there and things like that. We go in and we cut the brush back and clean it up so that the officers can see in. We clean up some of the trails around too. On Ravenna, we do, this is going really fast.
Did I hit the wrong one? Did I hit the back here?
This one, okay. Okay, now it stopped.
Now you can.
How fast can I talk? Ravenna Trail is one that we keep kind of a regular maintenance on just because we have the time to do it. It gets covered with leaves, the drains get plugged up, there's litter and the vines grow over and things like that, so I take the crew in and I think it was last summer we also gravled it, which was interesting running a wheelbarrow up and down that. We just kind of go around town and more sidewalks that we clean up, we try to keep railroad looking good, keep the grates cleaned out. The skate park is something we try to do on a regular basis. We go, try to go in on Thursdays or Fridays and pick up garbage. The parks department is doing a really good job of it now, so it's not getting as bad as it was. And then more sidewalks going up and down the hill, getting the blackberry bushes off and things like that, so it's easier for people to walk up and down. We help with the events around here sometimes, before and after, and we've also been asked to assist with some of the landscaping. We worked with the Mason County Noxic Weed Board, I believe it's called, pulling up Scotch broom along the New Brockdale Trail, and we sandbag occasionally and stockpile it for the department. And this was on Coda Street, the blackberry bushes that were hanging all the way over. A lot of the projects that we go out and pick up are ones that citizens have called and said, geez, can you do something about that?
Isn't this like Third Street instead of Coda?
It's on the, was the very corner.
Corner of Coda.
Yes.
Third, I think, Third or Second Street, yeah. Okay, looks good.
And like I said, we just go around town and do, some of the projects are smaller ones like this where you just clean up, just to make it look a little bit better and make the defendants feel like they're putting something back in the community and sprucing things up. Places that are high usage for partying and drinking, this was Franklin Street out toward the end of it. And down on Front Street, it gets a lot of usage down there, and we did some weeding and some trimming around the facility for them also, and also at the fire department. And this is Ravenna Trail, again, cleaning out the grates and then gravelling it. Okay, I'll get the hang of it. This was E Street before the final cleanup. On the left is when they brought our crew in with a container and we cleaned it up from the outside before they were able to get in onto the private property. And sidewalks, clearing a brush off, making it safer on some of those back areas that don't get, you know, seen very often. This is one of the camps on Park Street. Last week, just one camp in Park Street, we took seven hundred pounds of garbage out of one tent.
Oh my gosh.
And the surround, just surrounding the tent itself. So thousands of pounds come out of there and unauthorized camps.
Do you think that this is not all from the camp? Do you think maybe some people driving by goes, oh, you know?
No, because they're back in the woods. You can see them from the road and you can get a trail to them, but this is just their daily garbage and the stuff that they collect.
Oh, right.
And they pile around the tent, but the last tent that we took out, it was probably a good twelve inches deep inside of garbage and it was inhabited at that time. The police officers came in and, and asked them to leave, so it's not like it had sat there for a long period of time. Just more abandoned camps. This is another one behind Neyland. This is off behind the facility on Front Street. If you walk down the railroad tracks, just a very short distance, there's one on the left and one on the right, and on a regular basis, we go in and clean those up. So that's what I do. On the back, there was also a handout that gave you an idea of what we did for the year or till December eighth. That I had sixty-eight, sixty-three completions in the program and I have ninety-threes that are currently going through the program. We picked up a hundred and sixty-eight needles, and right here it says seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five pounds of garbage, but last week alone, we brought in three thousand sixty pounds of garbage out of the camps, so. And I look forward to going full-time and possibly being able to do some of the projects, like helping with the elderly or the disabled who have yards that get to looking really bad and they can't do it themselves or afford to do it. I would love to be able to go in and, and clean up some of those when their neighbors are complaining and stuff. Are there any questions?
No, but I am, I'm speechless. I am speechless at the amount of work you have done and your crews.
Thank you.
High five to you.
Thank you.
I just, I think it's just awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I am always amazed, driving around, when I will see an area that I hadn't noticed was particularly bad before, but then when you're, you and your crews have been there, the change is amazing, it's noticeable, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you'll be full-time.
Oh, I love what I do, so.
We can tell.
I'm glad I'm full-time too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow.
All right, any administration final touches?
Yes, sir.
Then our next meeting will be our regular city commission meeting. It'll be Tuesday, January third.
Monday. Oh, Tuesday, that's, I'm sorry.
Well, it does say Tuesday, yeah. Sometimes they make mistakes, sometimes they don't, so because that's members of first.
That's right.
That's right, and we got to have a little paid holiday on the Monday, you know, because we are government, you know? So on Tuesday, we will be back, and I believe that's an evening meeting at six PM. This meeting is adjourned.